Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, April thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-four. With me today, I have Don Schwenker, Nan Flaggard, myself, Mike Stannis are your county supervisors. Alyssa Smith is our county auditor.
Good morning.
Bjorn is our IT director. Luanne is our executive assistant. Mary is with the press. And first on our agenda today is Jennifer Mashandi, our insurance agent.
I think I'm just here to follow up on cyber.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, you know, I asked last week about if you were interested in purchasing cyber liability insurance, and I thought it was best just to bring Jennifer back to answer any questions that you have concerning that. She just needs a yes or no.
I just need to know if we're gonna keep the quote active or if we're closing it or.
So, we had several different numbers.
Yep.
Have we, I mean, I asked Bjorn to look into some of it, maybe what might be an advantage to him, IT, or so what we're covered. Did you come up with any conclusions out of that?
I gave a couple to Lisa, and we talked about it briefly, and kind of where we're at right now.
So.
Is there a recommendation of which policy to follow? Deductibles versus premium, all that?
So, the company that Bjorn and I kind of were targeting, if you want to have this cyber liability insurance, the company that we felt felt best fit Jackson County is this Tokyo Marine HCC. It's a Net Guard Plus. The only question I have, Jennifer, is in looking at this, what's a thirty thousand dollar deductible versus a fifty thousand retention?
I don't understand if you listen to where you got highlighted.
Is that what the deductible is, thirty thou?
Um, two million dollars worth of limit. And retention, so that's a different carrier. They're using retention the same way as they would use deductible. The way a retention works, like an attorney asks for the retention upfront, deductible is after the top. It's just a different.
Okay, all right. We noticed that. I just want to make sure.
Yeah, it's a different carrier. It's Traveler, so fifty thousand would be their deductible essentially.
And premium?
Twelve thousand.
On the twelve thousand and twelve, if in looking at.
Twelve thousand and twelve, sorry.
Four thousand.
Twelve thousand.
So, that would be option two.
Yeah, option one was for two million dollars worth of coverage. And so, the total premium with the policy fee is actually thirteen thousand one hundred ninety-two. Option two was the two million or the twelve thousand twelve. It's just the way that the columns are a little bit different and was what is there. So, the one.
I guess I don't know what coverage means, and I'm not an IT expert by any means.
That's why you default it before to Bjorn.
And I, and I I just wonder sometimes again, is is two million sufficient if we get held ransom, I want to call it? I mean, it sounds pretty minimal to me at this point of the game.
How much of our monetary transactions on ACH or electronic transfer? Because to me, that's where we might open ourselves up to the biggest risk is somebody snagging and rerouting electronic transfers.
You know, you have, you have ACHs that we all, we all have our payroll is ACH. So, of course, all county, I'd say most county employees, I can't say all, most have our paychecks ACHed. It's a requirement. We also have, when we do claims here on Tuesdays, a lot of those, not all. Again, I don't know if it's fifty fifty. I'd have to go back and look. But you also have other, do we have any problems as far as people using credit cards?
No.
Okay.
We have a couple of offices that do.
But there's no.
But we're protected somewhat to a credit card company for that.
Okay.
That's more than credit.
The thing is, that I'm more concerned about is that, just like what happened in another county, where it was another, it happened in another piece of government, you know, and came back to county government. So, you know, we interact with city clerks and, and, you know, we interact with a lot of people. So, that's one of my concerns. The other concern that I have is that we have so many employees here, and it would just take one to click on something bad.
So, do you see in the industry locally, I should say, because we are rural, I don't want to put it out there and say, hey, we don't have insurance? You know, I mean, hello.
We did.
It's like, seriously, I mean, do you see in the industry that in rural, not just Iowa, be it whatever, South Dakota, whatever, I don't know.
We call them soft targets.
They call.
Soft targets.
Yeah.
And it's because we don't have the same robust policies, procedures, firewalls, et cetera. And so, you're, you're, you're a soft target for the opportunity for a cyber hacker or a bad actor, as they refer to them. And they get in, and if they realize.
To me, that's what that's all.
I don't have enough knowledge to explain the dark web and all of that good jazz. I just know that, you know, municipalities, any entity that is, you know.
Now, Mary's gonna write about it. Now, we're ours, folks.
You can find all of that already on there.
You have to also understand, just to throw it out there, so it's, we have to put on so many different layers because of elections, because of our, you know, so we have to, we.
So, are you covered through the same entity? Are you covered through what? Through this new policy or where we are right now? I gotta tell you, I, in the sixty-four years, how old am I, sixty-four? I've never heard enough more about insurance in the last six months than I have in sixty-five years. I don't have a count.
Well, I mean, it is, it is a thing because you're hearing more about weather and you're hearing more about cyber. It is the way of the world, Mike, I mean. Unfortunately, we, and again, how did this come about? We offered it at renewal time because you didn't have it. So, it's something that we brought to the table at that time.
I can tell you, I'm sensitive to this right now because with my private practice, we go, we send our insurance claims out to, through clearinghouses and stuff. And the major clearinghouse in the United States that processes pretty much all of the insurance claims, they got hacked and people didn't get paid for like two months and they're still, that happened in February, and they still haven't figured out how they're gonna fix it. And it literally shut the, the industry down for a while. And that's right, that's medical, that's everything. And it's just because a click or whatever. So, that's the kind of stuff where, where the world, we're getting in.
I would, I would agree with you a hundred percent. My point is, if that comes to fruition, something like that's happened, I still see the insurance company, whether we have coverage or not, still arguing with, saying, who's liable here, you know? I mean, I can see that happening.
Well, then you're gonna turn in your claim, and just like any other claim, they're gonna work it to, to validate whether the, the claim is just to pay. And if it's really what happened, they're gonna make a, they're gonna pay based on your policy that is written. I mean, no different than hitting a squad car with a squirrel or whatever. You know, we hit, we hit the squad, we have, we still have to figure out who's at fault for the accident or another vehicle, and then we may pay him it based on that. And that's, that is insurance.
Because we're hooked to the internet and because of the elections and such, every year, Bjorn, everybody in my office and Bjorn, we have to take this, we have to take this cybersecurity training. Every year I have to do it. I just got done doing it. It was nine modules.
Yeah, two hours.
It's about, yeah, it's about fishing and swatting and.
I mean, we do that too.
But nobody else in the courthouse has to do that.
Right, to that extent.
That's right.
We do a.
We do in the auditor's office, but nobody in the courthouse has to do that.
So, are we looking at what kind of period from what to what?
Well, we, we initially started the quote in January.
So, we don't need all the costs of it?
So far, the food is still good. I need to validate if you're gonna move forward with it or keep it active when I'm doing, because we're, we're down to the wire now. The other day when I sent the email, you had thirty days left for it to continue to stay an active quote before I have to put it back through the cycle again.
Would it run with the current or the next fiscal year? Is that logical?
Or is it gonna go from a year from today? We can ask for a short policy, and I mean, I've never asked for a cyber short policy before, where we would start it now and run it until January one and then renew it in January.
So, can we run your calendar year though? I'm talking fiscal year. Can we run it from our fiscal year?
See, our insurance reading is March first.
Right.
So, that's the question is, do we run it March first? Do you want to run it July first or?
I don't want to run it at all, but I need to say. But I'm, but am I obligated to? Probably. I don't, I don't know.
I think we definitely need to look at it with the world that we're living in.
Well, are you, so.
I would say, can we keep it active and?
I, I guess, I don't know anything about it. I just know we need it. It seems like the world we live in, it's a necessity. So, what I'm looking is at the three of you, or the two of you, Jennifer Bjorn, or all three of you, Alyssa too, you, you got a bunch of policies. I look at it, I don't care if it's in Spanish or Chinese or where, I don't, I don't know, I don't know what it means.
Well, I followed your.
Give us a recommendation.
Over there.
That's.
I followed your recommendation and provided.
Go back and say, this is the one that best suits for us.
He did that.
With our safeguard.
Now, your, now your people are telling you this one, the Tokyo Marine. Option number two, if that's what I'm indicating that you are all.
And you know what? I don't sell insurance. I don't know. I mean, I'm doing the best I can.
Tokyo Marine, option number two, do you feel that? We put together three options that we felt were all very good.
Good.
And so, we. Is there a reason you?
Do the other?
Probably premium.
Cheaper premium. Two million dollar coverage.
But has everything else like.
It looked like they had some inner.
Some extra security measures that we can set up for employees, it sounded like to me.
Okay.
Again, we're not budgeted for this.
We're not.
So.
Where would it come out of?
Our end, do you find balance?
I guess it would come out of the super, I just thought that.
Because insurance is budgeted through this office.
So, that's what I'm saying. We have the current fiscal year we're in, and then after July, so what, what's our coverage run from? We're, we're long past March.
For your I can policy, correct. Do you want to work towards a July one date for this specific policy?
I would say.
I mean, this is, this is on both dates.
If everything else.
Or you want to go to March? Okay, okay.
Otherwise, you're just gonna get missed.
March first. So, you want me to see if I can write it effective immediate and then to March one and then March one, Ellen? Okay, we will see if we can. And then for clarification purposes, when the app is put together, are we docu-signing, we're sending it to you guys to docu-sign that? Or are we sending it to Lisa to document the sign?
What's procedure?
We do the other insurance.
It has been sent to Lisa.
We still have to approve it. Is that correct? We haven't done any of that yet. So, are we waiting to see a number or what are we doing?
I think they said the number. It would just maybe change because it's, it's a shorter premium.
A good on the effective dates.
What's the wishes of the board?
I guess I would, I would like to see, before we officially approve it, if they can match it up with our March dates and if everything goes with that, bring it back for approval.
Keep it on the agenda, Luanne.
I will reach out to them and see if we get that done, and then I will send an email back. And I will go from there. If it's not available, do you want to have a second plan?
What do you mean by not available?
If they say nope, when you make it effective, it's a twelve month policy from that effective date. What's the plan be?
What the number is and what, what premium is.
And even people like.
Don't drink wine.
Even act as a driver.
Who shot it? All right.
All right.
That fair enough? All right.
For today.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Um, Jayden, are you guys in a hurry? I mean, you're scheduled at nine twenty-five, okay?
Schedule's all about nine twenty-five.
Yeah. Okay, otherwise, I would ask Jayden to, you know, because as long as you're willing, we're still on schedule.
Yeah. This won't, this won't take too long.
Okay, we're joined by Mr. Jayden Chekel, our Assitant County Engineer. Good morning.
Good morning. First on the agenda is a utility permit for ITC. This is for our one hundred eighty-four Avenue Bridge that's going to be replaced this summer. Uh, this is the last utility, I believe, that needs relocated. So, it was MMEU's line, but ITC bought it from them. So, they're just bumping out to our proposed right of way. We met out there with the Dan Schrader last week, and everything was fine with Dan, where they plan to go with those transmission lines. So, pretty straightforward for us. So, we recommend approval.
Make the motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second to approve ITC Midwest C rear location permit for utilities. All those in favors, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, same side. Motion carried.
Next is a couple of entrance permits. The first one is for Sean Hare, Nancy Collins, Sean Hare's mother-in-law. It's an existing farm entrance. They're just looking for a nine-one-one sign. Uh, sounds like in the past, there was maybe an accident or ATV rollover and nothing too severe, but just like a nine-one-one address for that driveway in case if something were to happen, you know, it's easily, easy to identify where, roughly where they're at. So.
Do we normally do that just for?
I don't know what our past practice has been. I mean, to me, I don't see an issue with it because it's not like we have just so many addresses to give out. I mean, each, we come up with the addresses based on each road segment and where that driveway falls within that road segment. So, it's not like, once we issue this entry, or this address, it's not like, oh, this one, it's not like we shorten our list. I mean, it's just based on where the, kind of thing, or explained.
I just know in the past, we haven't done it.
Well, we've talked about it before, what's required or, and what initiates the, the need for a nine-one-one address? And I was on the assumption that you had to have electricity at, at the location. I don't know if that's, maybe that's not the case, but that was my.
In order for you to. And electric to provide service, they do need an.
Need it, okay, maybe that's where.
So, it's not really us dictating that. It's more the utility companies, like, we won't provide you service until there is an.
But then there hasn't had, there doesn't need to be a facility of any kind, no building, no structure of any kind.
Uh, I don't, I mean, I guess if they're gonna run electric, it almost have to be for something, whether it's lights and.
We certainly want emergency personnel to know where we're at.
I just know in the past, we haven't because I fell into that.
Otherwise, I don't have an issue. I don't have an issue either way.
And I, I wanted it for the exact same reason, because I knew we were gonna be clearing timbers and stuff like that. And I'm like, if something happens, I want to be able to say.
True.
Go to this address versus now I gotta remember a neighbor here, neighbor there's address and go to the third driveway pass, you know? That's almost impossible.
I guess, as of recent, we've been doing it more, because I don't know if you guys recall this, I was pregnant a few months ago on Centerville Road, there was one for Steve Capacious that was this sort of the same deal. I mean, uh, nobody lived back there. There's some old buildings, but same thing, he wanted an address just for emergency.
Back there, yeah.
So, it's in the past, yeah, it maybe hasn't happened, but I guess, I don't see an issue with it, because again, it's not like, I mean, you go a hundred feet north or south of this existing driveway, it's gonna be a different address, because it's just much further down the road. So, it's not like we're eliminating addresses from other people.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Very good.
A motion and a second to approve the entrance, uh, it's actually basically, there's probably an entrance permit, is that correct?
Yes, so it's, since it's never been a, it's been a driveway that's been there for, before we had our system. So.
So, they're just applying for a farm entrance.
Yep, and I guess I should, it's in Butler Township, Section thirty-six.
Yep. So, I have a motion and a second to approve the farm entrance and, and as presented, all those in favors, say aye.
Right.
I oppose, same side. Motion carried.
Next is residential entrance on Ninetieth Street, which is the Level B portion of Ninetieth Street. And, uh, in your pack, you have the, should have had the letter, the notarized letter that you probably discussed this a while back, uh, or you seen the letter prior to it being notarized about. We sent them the, directed this letter, attached with it a Level B ordinance stating what we do or don't do as far as Level B goes, and that we have no intention of, uh, increasing the roadway classification from a Level B to a Level A. Uh, they would agree to pay for any rock hauling on that stretch of road. And as of last week, we just got the notarized letter back saying that he, you know, acknowledged all of that. So.
Almost liable with that road to muddy and emergency services can't get there.
So, if you approve a residential permit entrance, and we're not obligated to maintain it, then to the point that accessible to emergency services?
Minimum, I don't know. It's minimum maintenance. I mean, it's, and we can't limit people access as well.
I hear you. So, I'm, I'm exactly, I'm exactly here what you're saying. After the fact, um, we go ahead and say, yeah, you can have a residential entrance here. Now, all the kids have to, well, you, you give me the permit for a residential entrance. Now, you need to maintain it. Is there, are we?
I don't know. I guess I could talk to John. I mean, I don't know.
I.
Kind of covered by him, having this notarized letter acknowledging the Level B ordinance, you know, that because I know it states something, brush will not be, brush cutting will not be performed, uh, routine bleeding will not be performed. I mean, all that stuff and ordinance is our county law. Or that, but.
I, I hear you, Jayden, and I agree with you. I'm just saying, I don't want to get sued five years from now again, because something happened here and we couldn't get in.
Well, I agree.
We have a urgency here, we can't get there.
They do know south, just south of here, on Ninetieth Street, on the Level B portion, there is a residential address, residential entrance already on that road. And, uh, trying to come full circle here, remember Todd has talked about where we're doing this Level Bs, deep stuff. Well, part of that is, we, I've noticed that on this street specifically, on the Level B part, it looks like it's been rocked routinely, you know, whether, I don't know if they pay for it or not.
If I understand it right, do those school buses even go down to pick up kids at some time?
It could, and I have asked our snowplow, our grader operator, the snowplows, that just, like, I need to be honest, have you snowplowed that Level B? And he's like, yes, because as I've been told in the past, that's, I just, I just need to know. So, as we address this stuff, we know which way, how to correct it, but I don't know.
I mean, because I don't want to be treating this Level B this way and this Level B this way and.
And that's what we're.
And because I know my grader, I get this privileges and.
And that's what we're trying to clean up, because I think that currently happens in areas, and I'm not trying to.
Well, I've.
Don't talk to anybody, but I just, we're trying to clean it up so it's fair for everybody.
And I'm okay with, I'm okay with giving him the entrance permit. I'm okay with it, a residential, but.
You're gonna talk to John first?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would like that. I would like, I would like clarification to say, if we give you the residential permit and you can put it in there, are we obligated to maintain it because of emergency services?
Okay.
That's all right.
Yeah.
I can do that.
Which is out of. Yeah, motion to table. Um, I got motion and a second to table until we gather further information. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carried.
Then last is roadway maintenance agreement. So, every year, the DOT sends us a maintenance agreement for snow and ice control on the Makoka to Cape State Park. So, it's only by lane miles, it's point seven two lane miles, so point three six each way. It's just literally through the park. Uh, they increased the rate for this upcoming year from, when did it take effect? From July first to June thirtieth. Uh, so don't really have any way to verify, you know? Since we don't have the sensors on the truck, you have to verify how much sand or salt we spread, time we spend on it. But again, we, it's only through the park, and we'd have to go through the park to get, continue on to our portion of what is that, ninety? Ninety-eighth street? So, I mean, the time it takes is. But this is the annual agreement.
It is annual agreement, and we want to be good neighbors and.
What's the cost?
Do you want it total? So, it's gonna be twenty-three fifteen per lane mile. So, at point seven two.
So, what's the overall, what, fifteen or sixteen hundred?
Yeah, so one thousand six hundred seventy-six dollars and six cents.
Two thousand six.
Yeah.
We need a motion to.
Yes, recommend.
I'll make that motion to go ahead and approve the I with DOT maintenance thing.
Sure. Next and second to approve the, uh, maintenance agreement with Makoka to State Park. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And that's all. I had a quick update on three oh eight street. They are paving as we speak on Phase Two today. So, uh, I guess if you guys get a chance, care to go see it, they'll probably be paving till, they're out here, what's that, till it rains?
Then it ain't raining today.
Did you get a rate on the, the, taking the Level Cs, or V, or A?
Oh, we haven't looked at that yet. We haven't got a chance to go out there and look at it to get a quick survey to get cost yet. So, I didn't conclude that on this week's.
Worried about the directing.
On that. On, on the discussion from last week's?
Yeah.
That one, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I haven't got the chance, to be honest. I haven't got the chance last week to get out there and look at it.
Okay.
Thank you much.
Thanks, Jayden. All right, we are down to the visitor and citizens portion of our meeting, and I believe we do have some individuals here that I'd like to approach the board this morning. If you would, please come forward and I think we know some of us, and there's a few back here I don't know.
Yeah, I'll introduce a couple of you here. Thank you for working us in today. So, this is Danny Davis. He is the court administrator for the Seventh Judicial District. And, uh, back there in the black sweater is Jennifer Wees. She's the new clerk of court here.
Nice to meet you.
So, again, thanks for working us in. What we wanted to do is give you just a short, we don't want to take a lot of your time, but give you a short update on some of the projects the court administration is doing back in the district court area and in the clerk's office. And to give you an update on what that is, they're spending, I think it's approximately ninety thousand dollars on updating furniture and equipment and that type of thing, both in district court, the jury room, and in the clerk's office. Uh, before we do that, I wanted to thank you for letting Jeff work with us on carpeting back there. We've, I've talked to him. I know Jennifer has talked to him too. Uh, he's been very, very helpful. That's gonna be a really nice addition back there with carpeting and paint, and that'll go along, uh, help us out a long ways. I think we've had a good partnership with the county over the last couple of years, maybe better than we have sometimes in the past. We were able to repurpose some of that office space to the county that we were underutilizing. So, um, we're hoping to keep that going, and we do have a little ask for you here that you're probably aware of. But before we do that, why don't I have Danny tell you a little bit about what the project is back there without taking a lot of time?
So, uh, if you don't mind, I'm going to give you these are the different things that we are doing. Uh, I have one copy of it, if you don't mind. So, the clerk's office, that's the work that's being done in the clerk's office, and then, uh, the, the judge's area, and then the, also, the jury room and, and spaces like that. So, you know, we're replacing most of the furniture and, uh, all the court area, uh, the courtroom itself, there was some upgrades in the furniture. We are putting in a new witness chair, uh, but in the judge's chambers, we're putting in new, uh, furniture in there. We're putting in new furniture in the jury room as well. And, um, so all that's about ninety thousand dollars. We've also upgraded all the, um, electronics in the courtroom, you know, have all the audio visual latest stuff, and that's, that's seventy, eighty thousand dollars there that we've upgraded in the courtrooms as well. And, you know, one of the things we are doing is trying to make sure that, you know, Scott County is one of our larger counties, and we get more furniture. But we want to make sure that the, uh, other counties in our district, um, whether they're smaller or larger, has, uh, latest technology and the best-looking furniture that we can do things so that, uh, the citizens can be proud of when they come in, because we have people that come into the, you know, the clerk's office all the time filing paperwork. We feel like that, uh, we need to upgrade that. I, I had some, uh, money that I've been saving, wanting to, uh, upgrade the furniture in the clerk's office, uh, for that reason. With these, uh, furniture, also, we add the stand set desk, you know, that, that, that they can choose what height they want the desk to be at for the, uh, staff and everything. So, it's the latest, uh, things, and it also provides security for staff, because even though it's not a complete, you know, somebody could, they'll probably get through there, it slows them down if we have an issue, and they're not as tempted to be, you know, uh, they, they may think twice before they, uh, just have an emotional reaction to what the courts are telling them. And so, this is the way it was, uh, we designed. Um, and so this is the way it was uh we designed it. Uh, the one of the things that um this layout is a little different because of the putting in the security measures and the stand desk and everything else. And it uh, so the way the flooring is now with the carpet and the tile, uh, it makes it a little more difficult for the installation and the way it looks uh wouldn't be as uh the way it, you know, wouldn't fit the furniture, would match the furniture, so. Uh, but we wanted to get this installed because I think it, it looks really good. Um. And it will uh improve uh. Our uh, the staff's ability to do their job and make it more comfortable and and, and it looks good for the citizens coming in.
I think security is a big part of it for me. You know, the clerk's office can be of all little plates at times, not very often, but generally when people lose in court, their first stop is down to the clerk's office to pay something or do something and. You know, we've had some incidents down there where people get pretty upset. That's why the locked door, we thought was a good thing. I guess what we're coming to ask you for is to consider if you would consider putting new flooring in the front part of the clerk's office. And I look at this as being a generational project. Frankly, I never thought I'd see the day where court administration at state level would put ninety thousand dollars in, in a small courthouse like this. So I think it's great. A lot of that's been due to Danny's efforts and Jennifer's too. But, so I think this is gonna be something that's gonna be in place for twenty years or more. Probably more back in the district court area. Um, and I think it would be great if we could get the flooring in now that would work for that and we'll have this project done for a couple of decades. Um, and it will provide better security for the clerk stamp, and I think it would look nice for the public. And it's a lot cheaper than a lot of the other fixes that we've, I've heard talked about over the years here where maybe we put bulletproof glass up or change that into a counter so that people are out home. This is a relatively inexpensive solution, so. That's what we came to ask.
Okay, so a couple of questions I have are. Jeff, do you have a recommendation? Or I mean, I went down this morning, looked over briefly. I don't spend a lot of time in the clerk's office, I guess. But uh, um, I mean, again. Our, our initial thoughts may be the front lobby area where they do um interact with, with the cubicles, if you will. Um, we thought maybe tile would be better for cleanup for mud or anything like that. I don't know if that's the case or not.
I mean, it's probably easier to clean up. The only concern I have is that, you know, sometime down the road when something changes, now you have to deal with that tile again. That's the only, that's the only concern I have with that, you know, and, and the tile that goes back to that back room, I think is gonna be not a very good spot. It's gonna be, you know, you know, part of it's gonna be carpet. I think part of it's gonna be tile. So that could be a little bit of a trip hazard as you go back through that door to that back, to that back area.
Is there a way maybe we could kind of compromise and keep the tile in front of where the people come in, but that aisle way back to the door, have that tile removed? And have it so it's carpeted through the office area?
Yeah.
First to the entrance?
Yeah, that could, that could easily be done. You know, we could save that, refinish that, probably put some new, new uh wax on it. Like I said, the only thing is if something moves, you know, then you run into that problem of. Okay, now it's half on the tile.
They're here telling us this is a generational decision. It won't change for twenty or thirty years, so I'm gonna go with that.
So, I guess I'm gonna ask somebody that's been here longer than I have. Is there any kind of an agreement for as far as um who pays for what or whose dime is this is on? Uh, I know we have leases, we have leases. I know we're obligated to give you space, but I, I don't know what that is.
The, the space includes the floor, you know, having the floor and painted walls. We put the furniture in. And the way I usually describe it is if it, if it can be taken, then we pay for it. If it's a fixture, then the county pays for it. And that's the way, you know, so a fixture, a floor is considered a fixture.
Yeah, I, I would say you're right there. I mean, I would say somewhat that is part of our building, that is part of our design. So it's nailed, glued or screwed, it's, it's.
That's.
A fixture, yeah.
Yes.
Um, I don't know that it says that, but I would say that's probably the case. I don't know that.
My biggest issue is. We haven't planned on this, so it's not really in our budget anywhere, so.
And I wanted to apologize for that. That's not typically the way I like to do things. Uh, you know, I like to come to the board and say, hey, we're gonna be putting this in, uh, think about, you know, next year and be a part of your budget.
Right.
Out of respect, that's the way. And I apologize. The reason this happened is we ended up with, and, and you know how that this goes. Sometimes you have a surplus and we ended up with surplus money and we wanted, Jackson was the one, the county is the one that needed the most work as far as furniture and upgrades. So we dedicated our funding to Jackson County, because it is a once in a generational opportunity. I don't know when I will have this opportunity again to spend this money. So it's one of those things that, uh, and so we wanted to lessen the cost for the county because of this, and that's why we are, you know, if carpet is a, a better way and you can blend it in, we are willing to work in any way we can with, with the county from that perspective. Uh, and it, again, it's a respect issue and I apologize for coming to you at the last moment. Um. This thing has worked out. We've been working on this, trying to uh work on the drawings and come up with a solution. We have to get it done by June thirtieth. That's the state, you know, we have to have it installed uh by June thirtieth or the money goes away. And then I might not have any money to do this for several more years and so.
Well, we don't want to get left behind, so I mean, we appreciate that they're thinking of a little old Jackson County, but uh, just so we're on the same page, we need some quotes, I would say.
I said one thing to say, you know, so it is short notice. So if we can get a installer to come in at their, you know, when it works for them, it might not be that convenient for the state, you know, but you know what I'm saying? I mean, so if I can get somebody.
I think we'll work around that. We understand that. We know it's short notice.
So the problem is, I mean, so let's say he says, oh, I got some three, you know, three weeks from now, I can come and do that. We have to tear out that that furniture that's in there now.
Yeah.
And then what do we do? I mean.
But we'll make it work. We'll work with our vendors. We'll work, you know, if it's, we'll make it work.
Okay. I'm, you know what I'm saying?
We're trying to plan it all this work.
Hmm.
What do you?
Cut all the poor dealing.
Yeah, I mean, when do you, is your furniture in?
No, it's not.
Waiting or ordered or?
My.
Just the design is just done, right?
Yeah, my expectation mid-June. But if, if uh, if the vendor says I can do it the first part of June and it's two more weeks before we're ready, we'll make it work.
Yes.
It's a little bit easier than the other two rooms compared to this room, if you understand.
Yes.
Well, they work on this thing daily. I mean, they're there. So just so we stand each other, are we, I'm gonna call this a public area, even where these two desks are, correct?
Yes, right.
So are we gonna have tile in the whole public area or just to the end of these cubicles?
I'd say the highlight portion.
Is what's tile now?
That's where the tile is now. I would say we cut the tile off right at the end of that.
So my point is, Don, is the whole, this whole area is employee. This whole area is public.
Right.
So are you making all the public?
I would say the main, main area where people are gonna come and stand.
And not where these other two desks are for the.
I guess is, what's the purpose of them other, like file, filling out paperwork and stuff like that?
Yes, we provide uh public access so that you know, somebody doesn't have a computer at home, because most everything has to be done for people filing. And so they can come and use the equipment to scan their documents and everything. You know, they might not have a scanner and need to scan, so they, they, we give them access. And I.
Public desk is for.
I agree, that wall right before you get to the door, you know, if, that tile, if you leave that there and if you can carpet that rest of that public area, you know, where that little bit where that tile is, I would be very happy about that.
Good. I would say get a quote for that, doing it that way, and also get a quote for it just being on carpet and we'll probably go with the cheaper one.
Let's see what they are. That's all. So the tile in the public space, carpet in the.
Tile, the front three in front of here.
Yep.
And then this is carpet.
Okay, so this is basically what it is now, except for that little.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And then get a quote, get a quote for carpet, the whole thing, huh? So.
Yeah, yeah.
Cool.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, I mean, I guess. We're not looking to spend a bunch of money, but we're looking to keep ourselves looking respectable.
Yeah, I think it'll look nice. Either way. All right, well, thank.
All right, thanks, gentlemen. Jennifer, nice to meet you. Nice to meet you, Dan.
You're right.
All right. I'm gonna get back to, where was I?
If you have room for one more public comment?
Sure.
Okay, I, I would like to have Fair Board Manager Terry Seltzer come up and discuss with you um, a situation.
Good morning, Terry.
Good morning.
You got a bad arm.
Bad shoulder.
Bad shoulder.
Bad shoulder, bad shoulder surgery, so.
Oh, oh, good luck.
Yeah. Well, second time since June, so.
Yeah.
I'm getting good at one. So we had a situation with the new roof on Pearson. Um, it started to leak. So um I called back with, that put the roof on and they came up and looked at it. And basically what happened is the, when we had the snow, it, you know, when it thawed and the snow came off the roof, we called it the avalanche. Um, it took out the pipe that vents the heat. Um. And then the boot that was around it got damaged, so that's where it was leaking. So we called, he said that they wouldn't fix that, so we called um Bernie's Heating and Cooling, and they came up and put a heavier duty pipe in there and they were able to seal it. The other thing that he talked about was we have fourteen damaged two-way air vent cap, caps. And he said that every time it snows and we have that thawing and the snow goes down, it's going to destroy or knock off those air vent caps. Um, so he sent us a bid, which I thought was kind of odd, because I was hoping that was kind of under the warranty part. Um, but anyway, we have a bid to replace the fourteen damaged two-way air vent caps and then provide and install thirty-three snow ice diverters above the air vents to prevent future damages. Which I'm not sure why that wasn't done to begin with, but it wasn't. So I don't know, I, I called Lisa because I didn't know, is that something that you guys want to be a part of? Is that something you guys, because you put the roof on, is that our responsibility? I don't, I don't know the answer to that question, so.
I guess, I remember, right, the roof, when we uh, uh, took responsibility to put that roof on, it was kind of a one-time deal, I thought. At that point, I mean, we knew it needed maintenance. I, I, I totally agree with you. There should have been ice guards on whatever is. I mean, if they put the roof on and they seen it that these vents could get damaged by a large slide, obviously we need some ice guards on it.
Right.
You know, whether they're just the little ones or I don't know what they call up.
What, what is the pitch on that roof?
It ain't much.
It, it's not a lot.
So, because, and that's what I'm thinking. I, I just have a hard time picturing an avalanche.
Oh, no, it does.
You know.
We watched it. Um, and part of the problem he talked about because of the snow and the melting so fast. Um, that because of the amount of snow we had, the heaviness of the snow and the fact that it melted quickly, that that's why we had this issue. But every year we could, we hear the snow come.
So when you put an ice diverter, uh, it's like a little fin on the bottom, it kind of catches and holds those, right?
I would say it's on top, so I don't.
I, I don't know a hundred percent. I've got.
So that it, that doesn't fall off and on the bottom of the sheet metal roof or whatever. Keep it from coming off.
Yep.
Between one of these air vent things would serve as the same kind of thing. It's something that prevents things from sliding, because it isn't like the snow build up twenty feet of momentum.
Right.
And hit the air vent. The snow is up against the air vent.
But it hit, I mean, it was enough momentum that it took out that steel pipe that was that heating.
Yeah, I, I think we just had a freaky.
Yeah.
What have that?
Well, we did have fifteen inches of new page.
What heavy snow and then the rain on top of it, which caused, I'm sure water got under there and just kind of carried.
So may I ask what the bid is?
Two thousand six hundred and thirty-three dollars.
Okay, so you have a maintenance personnel there at the facility or?
Well, the problem is our maintenance guys can't put it on, because it says all workmanship per manufacturer requirements to maintain this.
Apparently, we don't.
Yeah, it doesn't sound like there's a warranty, because none of this stuff's.
Well, it almost sounds to me, and I have not called them on this. They, she called me, she said, I'm gonna send you a bid, and I thought, why are you gonna send me a bid? Shouldn't these vents be replaced as part of a warranty? Um, but obviously not, so I.
That's obvious they're not part of the roof, I don't think, but well, they probably would be, but. Did they put the vents on?
They would have had to.
They put the vents on?
I would have assumed so.
I don't, I, you know, when I think of a vent, I think of a ridge vent or a, this must be something that's down further on the roof.
I don't know. He knew exact, he goes, oh, you've got a bunch of your um air vent caps off. And I need to replace those. So he, this was not a shock to him. At all. So I think it's something that was on with the roof.
Yeah, you either get the ridge one or every sort of like ten, fifteen.
So, but still, they're not halfway down the roof, but three quarters way down the roof, are they?
They're towards the top, yeah.
So, I would say, I would say this anyway. I, I don't know that your maintenance guy's gonna fix it, but I would respect his opinion. And maybe we send our maintenance guy down there too to give an opinion.
Okay.
You know, and then I would, I would address them and say, hey, we're looking into this. We feel like this should be somewhat covered.
Mm hmm.
Right.
I mean, hiring them professionally, I would think they would have s- Again.
I just can't.
You hired professionals to do a job.
Goes, oh, it's the avalanche that happens. And I'm like, okay, but then when he said, when we got this with the diverters, like, well, we live in Iowa, why wouldn't you put the diverters on to begin with? Why would you wait until after the fact when we're losing? And the problem is, we didn't necessarily know those were off. So now the moisture that we've had is getting into the insulation. So we've, I mean, we've got to do something, but I feel like we're stuck between a rock and a hard place, that they didn't provide these to begin with. I don't understand why.
Yeah, you need a little bit for the roof.
Uh, somewhere probably in the file down there.
We have them too.
You probably have it.
Just to see if diverters were included on that bid as, you know.
Yeah, they, I'm sure we have the contract.
So, that would just be something.
I mean, obviously if they're professionals and they, they were given this job, they, but need to know what we need to protect ourselves.
Mm hmm. Well, my concern is if we have somebody else doing work up there, I'm even well, I'm not concerned, because they told us we had to have our um HVAC guy come and put the new pipe in, and then he put a boot, he sealed it really good, so they don't need to come back and do anything with that. But I'm concerned, we don't want to do anything that's gonna um, void the warranty.
I would write a nice letter back and, and uh, I don't, I mean, not so nice, whatever you want to consider, say. You know, it uh, we, we assume that some of this would have been, should have been done prior to cover.
And can I get the, well, I would assume, I need to have a copy.
We have it, because we, we did that project using our funds, so I remember having to bring the contract in for signature, so. I'm, I'm just trying to get a copy now.
Yeah, if you can get a copy, then I will.
Yeah.
From that. Then.
Um, and then. So, and these caps have technically been off since probably the end of January?
Probably.
At least. Cause that roof is a couple of years old.
Mm hmm.
That's in four.
Well, and I don't know that.
Four years old?
Three, no.
Three is three.
I think it was right before we came.
So technically, you don't know if it came off this winter.
Or last winter.
And maybe, uh, they've been off for a few months or a year and a half.
Yeah, I don't know.
You know.
Okay, well, we will uh, again, have your maintenance guy look at it and see what his best uh advice is or regulation of what should have happened or what should have been done.
Okay.
And then hopefully we can send Jeff down there too and
Okay.
and maybe take a look. Is that something we want to do?
Thank you very much.
All right.
I'll get it too. Perfect. They're working on it now.
But you would think that there were some of these vent caps, if they came off in the avalanche, would be laying on the ground.
Well, they might be, and somebody picks them up and throws them away, because they don't know what they are. You know, I don't, I don't, I've never seen one. He brought one in. I'm like, I've never seen it.
You know, and just like.
Right.
One, yeah. Several, how many are up, twelve?
Well, are they all off or are they just broken?
Well, he said some of them were off and some of them are broken. All right, thank you.
Push somewhere with the snow.
All right, thanks, Sarah.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, uh, next on our agenda is George Jordy and Elaine Edwards from the Jackson County Pioneer Cemetery. Good morning.
Good morning. How are you today?
Good. Beautiful day.
It is.
So we're here to talk about Russell Cemetery. And you provided with two different letters that. We were proposing to send to the land, landowner. The, the second letter was more of a introduction letter. And I guess my impression is, is I would like to start with the introduction letter. See if we get a response, if we don't, we may have to push it and go with the one that has uh, more legal options in it.
Well, I would agree myself, George, I mean, we've talked about this, you know, between us and I think it's. A lot better to say hi and shake hands first before we say, hey, we're, this is what the code of violence is. So, yeah, I think it's a nice gesture, just to make operative needs and if you don't get any response, I guess you'll kind of know, but.
It's been sold so many times.
Yeah.
Since we've had access, and so that's why the problem is that. Um, we deal with one owner and then it gets sold before we can get anything started with them.
Yeah, we can't do anything about that, so I mean, we just try, we just proceed as we can best see fit and uh, I I'd like to, the letter that says hi. My neighbors, you know.
Anyone have any concerns with either of the others?
I don't.
No, I looked them over and county attorney looked them over.
So I would start with your. You need action on that, or is that something you just want our approval and? You go ahead and do, or what do we need to have action on that?
That's up to you, I just, we just got on your agenda.
Yes, I think we could approve it, that means uh, we'll have record to say, we looked at it and read it anyway. And approved the, approved the introductory letter.
I'll make that motion to approve them mailing out this introductory. Letter.
Motion in second to approve the uh, Pioneer Seminary Commission to send out a letter of introduction. All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried.
And you okay if we don't get a response that we pick the next step?
I would say bring it back to us.
Add a timeframe to this letter of, would be interested in hearing from you by.
Nine, you know, thirty, sixty, ninety.
Sixty days out.
I think we did in one letter, I don't know if we did in the introductory letter. Might not have, so, we need a timeframe, I agree.
It says timely, I guess, I was leaving this.
What's your definition of timely, and my definition of timely may be two different things, you know, if you guys are looking at getting in there in June. And I maybe think, well, as long as I contact you sometime this year, it'll be okay.
So I was thinking timely, man, if I don't hear from you within.
Well, it's, it's, the introductory letter says, we would like to make ourselves available for a visit when it's convened for you in the next few weeks. So.
Yeah, that's reasonable, if, like, you say, it's in the, in the uh, drop portion of the. Um, field that, you know, obviously, you're not gonna be going through there if things are planted and growing.
Well, we probably can walk in to just to visit.
Sure.
Yeah. We're probably not gonna.
Make a plan. Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
My intent was, if we don't hear from soon, I would attempt to call the uh, the attorneys.
Let's, let's see if we get a response. Keep us posted, emails are good, we pass them on, pass them forward. But know what's going on that way, everybody's in the loop. Just sends response, sends response, let it go. Next on our agenda is Nathan Jones, our Jackson County Conservation Director, good morning, Nate.
Morning. So, um, last board meeting, kind of discussed, but first of all, the harbor wall is complete other than the, got a little bit of dirt work, but it's usable now. That's Bruce.
Is the boar ramp in yet? It wasn't a couple of weeks?
No, it isn't, no, well, I don't believe, I, that's a good question, I don't know if that is it or not, I didn't, I haven't looked. I don't think it is, but I don't. Okay, yeah, so, but that's all, at least kind of on the wrap up, and the docks are usable.
You gonna seed that?
That's on us, so, I was telling the crew, probably have to rent something to do a finish, because that dozer just leaves those. Ruts and then we'll get in there and see it. Um, wish Alex sort of put that.
You don't have a fall riser of any kind, you don't have a fall riser like that.
No, that's what I think I'd rent, or try to see if Shackle or somebody would come in and give us a bid. Um, but that, that needs seeded pretty quick here, if we can get some dry days in a row.
Yeah.
Um, to do that, but that, that was the main thing at the last board meeting, was kind of discussing that. Um, discussing the Destination Iowa project, water quality project starting to move forward, this, they got bids back. I don't know if the city has made any movement on it, but, um, so those came back favorably. Um, in that nine hundred fifty thousand dollar range for the water quality portion of that. So, um, we'll just wait and hear on what the city kind of council and wants to move on those, or who they select out of the bid pile there. Um, I met, I'm meeting with engineers out there this afternoon on the other portion of the Destination Iowa project. We did give Alex a deadline of June on the trail portion on that project to try to get that um, moving.
As good as you've got more communicated over.
Yeah, um. And I don't, you know, you you gotta permit and it's in twelve pains in the state, and if they're not giving him any feedback, he's not really got any feedback for us. Kind of thing.
Well, it sounded like it was the DOT portion, didn't sound like it was a big deal, but except for it's gonna take time, I suppose, I don't know.
Yeah.
He said he was ready other than that portion of it, but.
Yep, so the last feedback from Alex was last Monday, he talked to DOT lead and she said she had some minor. Changes that she was gonna send them in the next few weeks.
So at least they looked at it.
So, they have looked at it, that's the.
Yeah, we did make contact, it did make contact for, with our engineer too, to say if he got any strings or any doors that he can kick open that.
Yep.
You know, but uh, again, it's a, it's a process where.
Yeah.
You're at the mercy of time.
But with that being said, we gave them June first deadline, our other option was move the trail, it sounds like the Destination Iowa money does not want us to move the trail. So we, we're pretty near back shut, we're waiting on that permit, no matter what. Um, we have all the other permits in hand on that project, um. Yeah, so that was kind of our, it was a very short board meeting. I think it's kind of funny, they were talking about that snow on the fairgrounds, but we had the same thing happen in the center, not the roof or the railing and. A two by twelve off our deck, and it came off this winter off the center. So.
I was glad I had ice cards on between my house and mine.
I can't believe, when they built that center, they didn't put ice cards on, but I don't know how you would do it with that plastic shingle.
I can't imagine.
Roof, I don't know, but, yeah, so that was about it, campgrounds are all, well. Sebelas open, Spruce is gonna probably, we've been waiting on some water, the people doing the water stuff. Sounds like we're probably just gonna open it this week, because they've got a few other things going on. Um, they got the roads tore up, that's first, put water lines in. Um, but we'll probably, we were gonna open today, but I told the crew to wait till tomorrow to save us money on water test. Because we have to test our water the day we open. And we don't want to have to do one today and tomorrow, because the month changed.
Oh, because of the month, yeah.
So, um, so we'll probably be opening tomorrow at Spruce.
Who does the water test?
Our staff does it.
Oh, does it?
Yep, so.
That's something Elizabeth would do, ain't you?
I don't know if she does those or not, um, we just take samples and run them over here to check it out, so. Um, but yeah, those places are moving and opening, mowing, starting, kind of, wish the rest would click your own this quick, but it's already paying. So, um, yeah, you guys have any questions for me?
Um, no, but speaking of water tests and the. About ACIA, they were looking for people to do.
I don't think we want to run a person every day to town or to Macoka taking those tests. I know they brought that up to me, it's a daily thing.
Is it daily? I didn't know what it was, if it was just the.
Yeah, it'll be seven days a week, so, I think they're gonna need to find somebody living in that neighborhood that wants. A retired person. So, but, yeah.
Cool.
All right.
All right, Adam, thanks for the update.
Thanks, guys have a good one.
You bet. John, are you in a hurry? You okay, Starry?
Hey, I'm good.
You wanna come up, John, we'll take you and uh.
Yep.
This guy can do his work as he sits there, I think he, pretty good.
Okay. Uh, basically, I talked about the fair project first, uh, there's no key for the max box. The fire department has keys, so, when we put the master key in the max box and just shut it.
I have a master key, so don't you think they, that they got it, or do you, I mean, what key there are you gonna put in the box?
The master one opens all doors, but the one.
Don't I have them all?
Yeah.
Or, so they're gonna get a hold of me?
No, you need.
You need to put a key in there and just shut the door up.
Oh, there's no key for us to open it up, it's the fire department.
I just wanted to make sure, I mean, I made the call last week and they were supposed to get a hold of me, I just didn't wanna. Somebody needs to put it in, 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 in the system, I guess. Okay, so, so it's a.
Nine one one said they didn't have it in the system that we have one there.
Yeah, they need to fill out paperwork. I don't think.
See, nobody said anything about, so will you?
The fire department typically has a key.
Right, but to put it in the system for nine one one, that way they would get called down there.
Yeah.
But that's all I needed to know.
As long as they have a key to their back box, whatever. Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that I didn't want to shut the door if they're.
Okay, really?
So we need to fill out some paperwork, but we have to have someone down there. Well, I went, when I called over to dispatch, I left myself whenever and said, call me, and Terry was working on it because of Al, so. We're gonna, we'll get it done, it's just a matter of.
Slam the door shut.
Doesn't sound like we can.
No. The key stays in it and you pull the key open.
I just want to get it done, yeah.
Yeah. Want to get it open. Uh, so thirtieth, they're gonna come uh, update the electrical software, I don't think there's any charge for that, but uh. Uh, they need to update the software for the electrical, for the controls. Because of length, time, the project, so, uh, that's being taken care of through Dwayne Stickley and whoever goes down there. I did buy some corner stainless steel corner guards from Gerardi, uh, Gerard fabrication. Yeah, Jeremy and I will put them on for you guys. All the final lien waivers, consent assurance, and final documents have gone out to the contractors, so. Should be able to close that job down pretty quick.
Come up to jail, same thing.
Any questions on uh, fair yet?
Yeah.
What?
Okay, so, you know, John, we, I showed you our, like, our cheat sheet, so to speak, our colored sheet, and you emailed that to Chris.
Yeah.
Um, and what have you heard back?
They're gonna get taken care of.
Okay.
So.
So off that back door, so, we we went down, we bought colored string. Colored strings were coded to a key, and then that transferred into a magic marker, and so we have on a, on a, on a schematic, I guess. All the keys and what they open, we did request a change. Um, I did talk to John, we believe that the one door is probably a construction cylinder and not. So we requested to have that rekeyed, I believe that the two, there's two outside doors that I think are actually switched. Um, when you look at the, the colors of what we have, you should have purple on this side and blue on this side, and it was opposite, so we've requested. Um, to have that switched over, there was a broken door, uh, an opener that we found, and so again, we've talked to John, John has sent that on. And hopefully that'll be, there were some issues.
It's been repaired already.
Oh, it has, okay, oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, Billy was down there and took care of it, I had met with him another day, and so things are getting. Uh, Pete has been excellent to work with and I don't know Billy's last name, but he's from Macoka or something, but uh. Yeah, that's it, and uh, so he's been down there working on everything and everything's been. Pretty much taken care of on the punch list, I went up and took care of the items there and I met with him.
John, can you answer why that one west door is a different style door that, that goes to the outside off of the ISU? So that door, it has just a pin at the top and the bottom, that basically you have to lock it to hold it shut? Versus the other ones have the panic push bar that has a little lever? Because with that being their main door, they're gonna be coming and going in and out of, that just seems like a. Odd door for a public entrance, that like wind's gonna catch a door.
Yeah, uh, I can check in that for you.
I mean, I don't know what, like, that door and the door on the back hallway of ISU could be flipped out, or, I don't know. It's just an odd.
It's an aluminum storefront door, isn't it?
It only shut, it only locks with the key and it does the pins.
Okay.
Going up and down.
Okay, I'll check in that for you.
And it's the only door in the building that I've seen that was that way. So it's an odd, it's just.
Like as the other.
And for that being a main door without having something that clicks to hold it, I see the wind catching that, you're gonna have a sprung door real quick.
Okay. And as far as the back doors, they're working on a, Billy's working on securing them, because I, I went down there last time. The one door has the east door of the conference room. Uh, going out the back, up north side, had a, the sweep and folding up underneath it, it was a real wet. After they cocked it, but I, I felt a dampness, so Billy's taking care of that. And he's also gonna take care of the other two doors, he's cocking along the bottom with the frame, things getting in through the frame. Uh, the other time though, they hadn't cocked around the precast in the door, and that's when it got real.
Real wet.
Yeah, so, working on that, the front doors did leak a little bit.
I'd say the front door, when we were sitting there, could see in the bottom corner, a little daylight.
Yeah, and up at the top too, where the pins hit. So they, they have to replace that, but it got wet in there and. It will get wet sometimes without a center style in that, you know, because they're wanting to take equipment in and out of there. It, it's always a problem with the, that, if you get a driving rain, but uh. Other than that, Jeremy and I got the countertops put in and everything's been certified, so we should be ready to go. Any other questions on that particular project? Okay, uh, as far as the jail goes, um, bringing uh, security electronics coming in the twelfth. It should be dust free by then in the control room and everything. Uh, they got the rest of the frames put up. Jerry and me and I worked over the weekend, laying a bunch of dogs, they've got the high stuff. Touched up and painted on that steel that we got from Gerardi and such. So all upper painting's been done now, we're down the ladder, just uh, touching up paint on that. Uh, we worked on that dry set counter some nights, so, uh, that's pretty well done at this point in time. And uh. I want, we want to get the people to finish the dayroom floors, you know, to finish a piece and then. Plumber and HVAC is gonna be done today with most of their stuff. What they're waiting on is uh, to determine the washer, residential washer and dryer. So we can finish the ductwork down to the.
Residential washer and dryer?
Yeah. We bought a commercial, commercials installed. The residential is it, get a small, you know, like a small load, like you get somebody that you've arrested that. Dirty clothes or lice infested, they just throw a small load in that. But I'll bring that pricing back when they get it to me, uh, Andrew and Sheriff working on that. We got some refrigerators that we need to determine and. They should buy out that, most kitchen equipments there in sight.
Is it plum for residential washer and dryer?
Yes, yeah, plum and electrical, just ready for that. You were there this morning, saw that, that mostly. Uh, I'm on waiting on the three base sink in the kitchen. Just didn't wanna take it in there yet with the amount of contractors going through that, that'd get damaged. But, uh, wanna keep them on that. So HVAC should finish up today and move their stuff out. Plumbing is working this week and next week to finish up all their stuff. Electricals, uh, getting all the lights on and do the above ceiling next week, so we put the rest of the ceiling tile in. Uh, BRF system controls are gonna be here to finish up and start up the main HVAC system up front this week. So everything's coming together right at the moment, so I figure the second week of June, we're going to do the training process for second week of June. And the training process on security electronics. And getting contractors out of there. But I'll probably have to shut the job down for three or four days when they go to do the corridors, the epoxy. Cause there's a time limit on when you, those chemical reactions will work. So I'll move everybody out to the vehicle salad port to finish that up, but they won't be able to get. In main part of the jail portion. I believe SDI is pretty well done, you know. Your contractors with, uh. Run and start doing the punch list, get her punched out and get her up and going.
We don't have no roof issues where we're gonna have amputations going on?
Ah, no, they're all done, not that, they have all engine, no.
Wow, I just wanna ask, we've been talking about it, you know, on either building.
This is memory, the truck goes gutters, so it doesn't run outside.
No, what about the, the shed, the, the storage shed, does that need ice cutters, does that have?
I didn't, I never liked to see if it has, uh.
Should have on the front side anyway, not, probably not the back, probably won't need it, but the front side where you access the doors.
There's the gutters up there, but, uh. Slide off the gutters, so. I, I can't, I don't remember, I didn't, I think you guys can't put that, uh, what was that guy's name to put that building out there? Uh, they make ones that clip right under the ribs, you know, the bar type. Nice, that you don't have to screw into the thing, but I can check, let me know. Cause I'll probably try to pay caps to lease, uh, maybe do something, so we can get a process following the week.
So I haven't been down there for a while, uh, the port, Sally Port and the building, is there room for that? We can start getting some of this, uh, furniture out of the storage and get it organized a little bit and.
They can put it in the front building as far as I'm concerned, but, uh.
What do you mean by that?
Uh, they put it in places, they get it, you know.
Well, I think we're gonna have to get it out of there and kind of sort it out a little bit, the way it sounded.
Well, the vehicle salad port paints and then just, that's why I'm trying to get the contractors finish up, get them out of there. So we get in there and finish the painting and get the electrical up, it's been packed all the time. I got all that kitchen equipment, but then the detention furniture should be out of there, that where we can get it. Into the steel buildings sorted out.
Is it, like, when can we do that?
If you give me a week or two, I think we could start getting it out of there.
I mean, just so we touch base with our people and.
Yeah, uh, Jeff's coming down today, uh, I think he talked to you about possibly. Start planting grass, running that emergency generator, putting some rock in there. So I think he's gonna call Secondary Road, see if they also send a load of gravel or some clean gravel and put in there. Uh, I'm working with the contractor, I wanna get the front dirt in the front, so we can start doing some stuff up there. And then I'm just having them, whatever the sheriff and Andrew bring me. I, I bring the pricing, you and you guys decide on what you wanna do, whether it's light or signage or whatever. I just get the pricing and then you guys decide what.
I don't know if you need a sign, it kind of speaks for itself. I don't know if you need a sign, it kind of speaks for itself.
You know, I, you know, we're just trying, trying, trying to get it finished up for you guys, so we can get moved in and, uh. Occupy the facility and hopefully start bringing some money.
Yeah, well, we need to use it.
And get all bells done before July, or June thirtieth.
That's all I had for you today, but you guys are willing to come down there and go through it anytime, I'll let you know when we move that. Whatever we're bringing over, over to sort it out.
Individuals that kind of put some of that in there, he said he'd be willing to come down and help us. Kind of sort it out, they were numbered and marked and in a certain way, but.
Well, that'd be good, cause it looks like it could be a little.
Yeah, I would say. All right. We got Michael Storm patiently waiting, our Jackson County Emergency Medical Services Coordinator. Good morning.
Good morning. All right, so since the last time we talked, we, uh, we're in the middle of EMT and EMR classes, we finished those up. And our students are in, uh, testing mode, so some of them have tested and been certified, others are. Working with their own schedules and getting their certification tests, so hopefully we get some more certifies going in, um.
How many did we end up with?
We ended up with nine EMRs and five EMTs, uh, the thing is to the testing portion of it, so. We had more interests from, uh, college age, high school age students, you know. So, um, they were asking me if we went and put on summer class too. But NICC was doing a higher class, um, during the summer, uh, so we're kind of directing them, uh, to NICC. I did talk to NICC and if we had enough people from our area, um. The hands on skills can, I could do it over here in hospital like I did during the winter class. And their lectures are all live, so they're basically keeping our residents from having to go up to NICC and make that trip all the time, so. Um, we'll see how many, how much we get, I know, um, Preston area had a few, um, college kids that were interested, so. Um, yeah, so hopefully we kind of grow those numbers, um. Coming into the, um, end of the year, fiscal year, here we start with, uh, system standards with our region. Uh, so they, every year we do, um. What we wanna work on for the year, so ours have been staffing since forever, um, and that's always tied to our grant that we get. Um, so we get reimbursement for continuing education, initial education, et cetera, so. Um, we're working on that, finishing that up, so we can get that submitted forward. Next year's greatest cycle as well as, um, now the classes are over, I guess, and that documentation and to get reimbursed, so. Um, that grant this year, they were estimating eighty to eighty-three hundred, I believe. We put in that, we thought we would have like thirteen, um, I just put. What I estimated that we might have had students for, um, and we ended up with, uh. Nine thou, ninety-one hundred that will submit, uh, so if there's extra funds out there, they'll dish it out to us. Or they'll disperse it to other counties, necessarily else, but. Um, so we added that up, this is what I've been working on, uh, just had a meeting last week with, with county, um, agencies, they. They gave me some other jobs to do, industry trends, um, our reporting software, finish up with that. County training, uh. I'm gonna wait till our July meeting, I believe, which is July for that safety meeting, uh, confirm exactly what they want for training. Um, here in the courthouse, and then I'll be working department versus department to make flexible and meet whatever needs anywhere, so. They want, you know, during work hours, after work hours, whatever. I keep an eye on them.
Kind of the CPR, AED.
Yeah, but it's, whatever, they, you know, they, they talked about a little first aid and how in-depth they wanted to go, I gave, uh, Jim. Some of that information for the last meeting, um, I'll be there on July, just to confirm, and then in the fall we'll knock all that stuff out. So, um, and then, yeah. Just working with, uh, with, uh, I just, again, just met with my association last week, um, that didn't seem to be going good, but in the summer, which. Uh, so education usually slows down a little bit in the summer, but, um, they used, also have. Different like disaster jails and stuff, so I'll be working with one media areas, management.
So you've been in contact with all the smaller departments and, and such, and keeping them, uh, we come system standards up to.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, um, so they reach out as they, you know, need, need this, or just kind of their goal or whatever they need. Um. The big push are when they have to renew and get inspected, that happened right before I got on, so I didn't deal with that, that's every three years, so. Um, we just kind of maintain the status quo and, uh, I go out for trainings, go out to their meetings. Um, our associate, association meetings are quarterly, but people reach out to me all the time.
So I know we've talked about this before, even the past, uh, individual, do you have time or do, are you available sometimes for? Um, to be at a facility or?
As, as requested, yeah.
Calls, yeah.
So, um, they have to, you know, put me on their roster, or, um, that I can respond to them.
Sure.
Covered with the state and all that stuff, but absolutely, yeah, if they want to, uh.
I mean, they know they have a day where a lot of their volunteers are gonna be gone or something, if you're around or.
Yeah, you know, or, you know, they're having, uh, they're having a, uh, a department. Get together, or you know, banquet or whatever, you know, Bellby just at fire department, just that one, if they want that and. So people can enjoy that, they don't have to leave, absolutely. So, and, uh.
And they're aware of that.
I, yeah, I, I made a letter, um. Sent out to all departments, just basically saying, when I started this position, what was this? Um, coordinator doing for you before, you know, you want me to continue that, is there anything you want added to that, and I make all those offers, yeah. So i- is there a choice, obviously we can't force anyone to say, put me on your roster, I'm gonna come run for it, but.
Maybe, maybe follow up with just kind of a reminder.
Yeah, I would like to.
You know, I've been in this position now so many months, you know. Be willing to help you guys out a day here or there, and you know you're short, or you got, you know, your main guys got doctor's visits or whatever, you know.
Absolutely, and I, you know, I make it a point to, um, when I meet with my partners, I go wherever they want, now I go, I go to you, you know. Don't have to come over here.
I just wanna hear that you are interacting with all the, all the facilities.
Yeah, absolutely, yep, um, we were. I think I brought it up last meeting that, um, Delmer and Lost Nation joined our county association because, uh, the hospital's ambulance covers all their district. Delmer was previously, but Lost Nation just got, um, jumped on our reporting software. Uh, it doesn't cost any additional cost for non-transports to do, so there, we were getting those integrated, getting above work down and everything on there too, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any questions for Michael?
Going well and.
Appreciate anything you need from us.
Not right now, no.
Any grants or refurbished AEDs out there?
Uh, possibly, the state never up that grant again, um, the state always had a grant, uh. But are you looking for what, like, type?
I had a church reach out.
It was a church, okay, yeah, um. I'll look for more for the churches, cause depending, you know, there's responders, there's, yeah, um. That was another thing, I was working with public health, I think the last time I talked to you, and we're still kind of doing that on. Putting out the stop to bleed training, um, and getting churches and schools specifically. To apply for a grant where they can get a stop to bleed case, you know, tourniquets and stuff like that, so I worked with assessors, I got. We have a lot of churches or defunct churches, I knew what property, and I tried to find email addresses for all I could. And sent that stuff out to them, so, um, we got good returns, I was down at Eastern Valley Elementary, I did all their, um. Their, their teachers for stop to bleed, we did three sessions during their, um, professional development days, so. Yeah, just kind of, as I needed, I go, go wherever. Thank you.
People's updated.
Yep.
Yeah, thanks, Star. All right, uh, Lisa.
This morning I need a motion to approve the minutes of the April twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four board proceedings as written by Honor Dr. Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
I'll make that motion.
A motion and second to approve the minutes and publishing as presented, all those in favor say aye. I oppose, motion carried.
With the paving of the three hundred and eighth street, um, street assessment project. This morning I need a motion to approve resolution number ten thirty-one dash zero four dash thirty dash twenty twenty-four. For an operating transfer from the secondary road three hundred and eighth street assessment fund two twenty thousand and one. To the secondary road fund twenty thousand for eighty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars and twenty cents effective April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution ten thirty-one dash zero four dash thirty dash twenty twenty-four as presented. All those in favor say aye. I oppose, motion carried.
This just transfers the money that was paid ahead over the secondary.
Yes, yes, and that helps by the, cause by the residents. So this is what the residents have paid, that have gone into this fund, that now that the project is being completed. This money now will help offset that cost. So I received an email, um, concerning some. A, a reimbursement for FEMA money. And this went out to Iowa Homeland Security, they took a look at all of the. Policies that we have, and they don't care for our procurement policy. So they sent us what they wanted in our procurement policy, everything that we just passed is okay. But they wanted us to add the Buy America. So today I'm asking to, um, approve and authorize board signatures on the revised Jackson County procurement policy. Just so we can, they're holding ten, they're holding ten thousand dollars until we do this. So if we don't do it, they're not gonna pay us, if we do it, yeah.
Okay, then a second, to approve, uh. Revised Jackson County procurement policy as presented, all those in favor say aye, I oppose, motion carried. Does that also include the very enough that was kind of, part of it was deleted, part of it?
Took care of that.
Yeah.
Took care of that also. Yeah, no, so honestly, I didn't even know that these things were submitted. So all of a sudden we get, I, I didn't even know anything about it, and all of a sudden, so I called out and talked to this lady, because some of the. Some of the, the, uh, things that she had talked about in her email didn't make any sense, and she goes, oh, that's a mistake on my part, I said, okay, well, that's good to know. Cause otherwise I was a little bit nervous, so hopefully with passing of this today, we'll get it sent back out and hopefully they'll release the funds. It's actually for FEMA.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's FEMA for secondary roads. And I haven't heard about FEMA for conservations, I don't know if they're gonna hold that up, or if they've already approved it, I don't know. So, um, I also need a motion to approve setting a public hearing date for a fiscal year budget amendment on May first, twenty twenty-four at ten a.m. And that's just kind of some end of the year cleanup.
Motion and a second to approve a public hearing date for fiscal year budget amendment. Um, on May twenty-first of twenty twenty-four at ten a.m. Uh, any further? Motion, and a motion and a second, any further conversation, did you have a question? And again, we're coming to the end of the year, so, um, again, it's normal that we, um, get everything in place and so we're. All those in favor say aye. I oppose, motion carried.
That's all, but I have some more to go.
Thank you. And then the win. Good morning.
Good morning. Get done, get outside today, man. Uh, what I have for you today, um, is the calendar. Um, tomorrow, Wednesday, May first, we may already, at nine a.m. is an RTA meeting in Dubuque, via Zoom for all of you. Um, there's a Wednesdays are possible meeting, that's a confirmed now, and it's actually at four thirty rather than four o'clock, I changed it on your calendars. For any of you that wanna go to that.
It's in Bellevue, Pro.
That's right, it's in Bellevue this time.
And, okay.
All right, um, at six o'clock tomorrow night is a nine one one, uh, board meeting for Mike and then. And also added to the calendar is a meeting for Mike at noon tomorrow, a special ECIA council meeting, you know, interview. By Zoom for Mike.
We have a courthouse security today, or safety today at one.
Okay. Um, I don't have anything else on the calendar until our next regular meeting, which will be next Tuesday, May seventh. In that evening at seven o'clock will be the board of health meeting for Nick.
Okay. That's it?
I think that's it. Um, I'm sure where this is on the, on here, um I do have a letter here from Josh um Bolt. For the SSA, he's asking for the letter of support.
Yeah, I, I hope ever I had a chance to read it over, I talked to uh. Uh engineer and county attorney, and nobody has a problem with it, uh I'm in favor of your support.
Alright, that's it.
Thank you. Alright, any other business before the board?
Oh, we did have an RPA meeting. And uh they did talk a lot, a lot more about, they actually gave rather extensive, yet somewhat very elongated. Brief on those ports of eastern Iowa and. Then, correct me if I'm wrong, but it basically sounded like. It'd just be an avenue to help if. Right now, along the Mississippi, Iowa doesn't have any actual like ports designated, without the designation of a port. Um, you're not eligible for certain grant funding and things like that. Cause I forget his name, uh George or something. Uh, he was trying to promote to get everybody, cause in Iowa, he says it's backward to state, right now they're waiting on a state designation. Is all they need to get it, they were on it for a couple of years, that it changed, the requirements changed. He said right now what Iowa's missing is a state designation, and unlike other states, which usually can just pass it. They said that the counties need to, like for, so many of the counties affected need to approve it. Then it'll kinda automatically qualify for a state designation, um. There was some question about funding and, you know. I asked about usually when there's federal funds coming in, there's some kinda local match that's involved with it and.
He didn't really answer that very well.
He was just like, well, there's, you know, it's just, it's, it, it's basically, it's another avenue to check a box, so people can go out and fish for grant money. And then you have to apply with, uh abide by whatever strings attached to that grant money. Uh, he said it was essential, it seems, seems like a lot of the Army Corps of Engineers use it, um. Uh, cause he was once affiliated with them, and he talked about it helped getting two million dollars for this and that with port designations, so.
I was hoping the guy from DOT would chime in a little bit more on that, because that, when we brought it up before. That was um. Shandra's big thing was that sometimes that takes away from other DOT funding you can get. And he didn't know if we really wanted to be doing that part of, you know, because of that, so.
But it seems like he was rather motivated in us doing something. And there was a couple of examples that he mailed out, one was preferred, one that. They wanted everybody to sign, but if we just approved something. Is what they were looking for. I think Scott County and a few of the counties, the ones they recommended, they were, they had issues with certain things in it. And uh they were coming up with their own version.
I think that whole open-ended funding, yes, is kind of a. You know, I don't want you to go and get a grant, then we gotta turn around and come up with. Match, match funds deal, because they went and got this grant, you know, type of deal, so.
The board, it has to be non-elected people. So there are seven counties, each county would nominate or appoint a representative on there of this. Board, this port authority board, and then they could. If somebody's applying for a grant, if they get a letter from the port authority board. And we were asking questions like, well, who services as the administrators? Uh who writes the stuff, who looks for the grants, who? Yeah, sure, you know, it was a lot of the answers, so, but it didn't really, he talked for almost fifty minutes, and I don't think he really actually answered a question. But I could see the benefits of it, but I could see where um.
I'm not sold on it yet, put it that way.
Yeah, having just a, a group of individuals pursuing money, sometimes can get you into a lot of trouble.
Shandra's take on it was, and uh he was gonna come back with more information as he. Progressed to through it, so yeah, hopefully they can come up with.
Well, he was in the room, so I don't know if he answered any ques- his questions, but.
Being so long, any kind of people were zoned out after a while.
The guy loved to talk, that's for sure.
Iris is moving forward with the water up in Bellevue there, as kinda Nate said. Um, they did have uh some things come up where some people. Rather than connecting to their well, which is, comes into the backside of their house, they wanted to know if the heater and stuff could come on the front side. So they're looking into that further as far as if. They can go through all the legal channels to kinda make them changes, and then what the. Difference in fee structure would be to do that, because. It would take a plumber to come inside and change the connection ports, so. There might be some added cost to homeowners then if they wanted to do that, and. That they would have to, a couple homeowners are like, well, we can do that ourselves, and we're like. Well, for the grant and that, it kinda has to be certified. Plumbers, so.
Well, it's gonna have to be inspected also, so they know there can't be any feedback of any kind, you know.
So they're looking into all the legalities of that, but just be aware that that was brought up and people might be talking about that. But though I, I really, I.
Well, yesterday we had gotten that email, I think it was yesterday, uh first I heard of with the special meeting tomorrow evening, I think the same night, same time as our nine-one-one is. As far as the uh DNR sent out a special meeting for the. It's called a forest habitat rehabilitation project on the islands in the Mississippi, so. I was kinda concerned if, if this was part of the Green Island project, so I gotta hold it, Nick. Um for the DNR and um Nathan for conservation also, they, and I, I forwarded all that email to you guys from this um. Nathan, I believe, or not, his name was Ryan. So basically, it's promoting, uh they're having a special meeting and it's promoting the um. Forest health on the islands and that were really damaged, uh tremendous damage last flood, I guess, so. Um they're concerned about a lot of the timber in, on the islands and, and such on the Mississippi, so. Just uh, just something to be aware of.
Years before that wasn't as big a deal, it was only about two feet deeper.
Yeah, I, you know, they must have had some significant damage last time around that.
Maybe the combination of the two floods.
Yeah, invasive species type thing, so I, I, maybe they're looking for something to do, I don't know.
They got extra money or?
Otherwise, I don't have anything else.
Motion to adjourn.
A motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye, I oppose, motion carried.